May 22nd, 2017, council meeting to order. If you please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Last one rise. At pledge allegiance.
... flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Colasar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hilbert.
Reading of minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting on May 8th, 2017, is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved. Second?
Is there any discussion on the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on your approval of the minutes?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Reports of standing committees, the finance committee met prior to the council meeting and will meet again, I think, in three weeks at our next council meeting. We have several items on the agenda. Health, safety, and sanitation committee, Mr. Colasar.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have a meeting scheduled at this point. We did go over the sanitation budget last week in our budget process, but besides that, that's all I have to report right now. Thank you.
Thank you, public properties committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you, special legislation committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting held. We'll work on scheduling a meeting with special legislation so we can talk about making some improvements on some areas in town that would benefit from that.
Thank you. The streets and sidewalks committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Thank you, water and utilities committee, Mr. Hilbert.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Thank you. And finally, emerging technologies committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for finance, we have 1792 budget amendments, 1793 then and now state farm auto insurance payment, 1794 then and now for Arthur J. Gallagher risk management payment, 1795 cooperative purchase for the case management software for the immunity court, 1796 amending resolution 5916 for CT consultants, 1797 expenditure of 15,000 for technology engineering group IT, 1798 resolution of intent OPWC waterline phase two, 1799 request to authorize temporary position for the finance department. And we have one for special legislation, we have 17100, develop plan to clean up blighted Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Friday, May 19th, at 7:00 PM, the sea of blue recognized police in our area here. And we had to move it to the PAC because of the weather being bad outside, but it was well attended. I'd like to thank Annie and Trevor Satterweight for putting the event together. On the next evening, Saturday, May 20th, Rolling Thunder hosted a candlelight vigil on our square for veterans as well as those who are still missing in action and POWs. That was from 7:30 to about 8:30. There's a lot of activities that are going to be coming up here in the next few weeks before our next council meeting. The farmers markets will start on Public Square at 9:00 AM. They begin on May 27th and go through October 14th, and they go till about 1:00 PM each day. On Saturday, May 27th, from 6:30 AM to about 11:00 AM, the Medina County Road Runners Club will host the Medina Half Marathon and 5K event. This event brings many visitors to the city, both racers and their families. The band concerts on Medina Public Square will start on Friday, June 2nd, at 8:30 PM, and they're every Friday night thereafter in June and July, as well as on July 4th, and each date is at 8:30 PM. Main Street Medina and the City host Kids' Day of Play at Medina Square on June 3rd from 9:00 to 1:00. And last but not least, the Medina Community Design Committee is hosting a rock show event of the summer on Saturday, June 10th, from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Medina Public Square. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a lot going on in the finance department, change in personnel, which we'll talk about upcoming on the agenda. And of course, as you know, we have a budget meeting coming up on Wednesday.
Yes, we love those. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Lieutenant Burke, Director of Acting, please chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recently, the Medina Emergency Management Agency, along with other public safety agencies, changed our mass notification system to a company called WENS. If the residents are currently enrolled, they don't have to do anything, their subscriptions automatically rolled over to WENS. If you're interested, and I highly recommend connecting with this, there's a link under the quick links on the Medina City website. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick updates. The new outdoor memorial pool is scheduled to open this Saturday at 11:00 AM. There will also be a grand opening celebration at Memorial Pool on Friday, June 2nd, at 10:00 AM. The first 100 patrons through the gate are free courtesy of Armstrong. And there will also be free hot dogs, chips, and water donated by Discount Drug Mart. So I want to thank both of those companies for their generous donations. The next rec advisory board committee is Thursday, June 15th, at 7:30 AM at the rec center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rorley, Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder, our splash pads do open this coming Saturday, Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gladys, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you. Some updates on our projects going on. The US 42 North Court Street project, as everyone knows, north of Reagan, they have erected the traffic control. There's only one way each direction, one lane each direction. Also, this morning, the Hillview Way was closed. That'll be closed for 30 days while it's reconstructed. West Smith Project, we placed concrete on State Road today. On the northbound lane and State Road, we'll continue tomorrow with the westbound lane of Smith east of State from the intersection east. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pecoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, the sanitation department kicked off the yard waste program. From the reports I received, there was decent participation from the route. We're picking up grass clippings, leaves, twigs, branches, and shrubbery. We will not pick up rocks, dirt, and definitely not plastic. Yard waste should be prepared and picked, put out at the curb same day as the regular trash pickup, and it'll be picked up after on a separate route. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you. We have a confirmation of mayoral appointments. We have three of them, and if there's no objection, I'd like to do all three at the same time. Hearing no objection, we have Mike Jenks, the Income Tax Review Board for a term expiring 12/3119, Mike Ryan, a records commission for a term expiring 12/3117, and Mildred Medley, Tax and Senate Review Council for a term expiring 12/3117.
Move to approve the, or move to confirm the mayoral appointments?
Second?
Any discussion on the confirmations? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the mayoral appointments?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
We have one confirmation of a finance director's appointment, Deputy Director of Finance for Lori Bowers.
Move to confirm the finance director's appointment?
Second?
Discussion on the confirmation of the finance director's appointment. Keith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to recognize Lori. She's here in the audience today. I mentioned earlier, we have some personnel changes in finance. My deputy finance director for most of the last five years, Rich Petruniac, has taken a position with Cuyahoga County. We're happy and excited for him. It's a step up in terms of the size of staff that he has to supervise, but that means we have to figure out how we're going to take care of that, and that's why we're here. So Lori has been payroll clerk for four and a half years. She's been with the finance department for five years, and we're going to promote her to deputy finance director with your approval.
Thank you. And Lori, congratulations.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the finance director's appointment?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Noses, communications, petitions, there's none. No unfinished business. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public are permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair in a reasonable timeline, approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Anybody? Anybody? Okay. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions, we have ordinance 6917 and an ordinance amending section 13301 of the codified ordinances of the city of Medina, Ohio relative to association membership.
Move to approve?
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are two organizations we're adding. Main Street Medina, which were already a part of as a city, but this is for, part of that, and then from the police department, the International Association of Property and Evidence.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the approval on the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 69-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 70-17, ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2017 concrete pavement joint sealing program.
Move to approve?
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This project is an annual project. This is a maintenance program for our concrete streets. We believe that doing this repetitively and consistently does extend the life of the streets, so we recommend moving forward with it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the ordinance?
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordinance 70-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 71-17, ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the 2017 concrete street repair program.
Move to approve?
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This is another annual program. This will actually remove and replace concrete panels in various locations throughout the city. This year, I think we're asking for $375,000.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the ordinance?
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Ordinance 71-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 7217, ordinance ratified in a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Medina and the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association for the police sergeants and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement.
Move to approve?
Second?
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second, adding the emergency clause?
Discussion on the ordinance and the emergency clause. Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. If it's okay, I'd like to address ordinance 72, 73, 74, 75, 79, 80, and 84 together.
That's wonderful.
Because, yeah, make it easy on you and me. So the wages, other than the sergeants, it amounts to the, I'll skip that, other than the sergeants, the wages for each of the union agreements and what has been requested of council to pass on to the non-union staff is two and a half retroactive to January 1st of this year for 2017, two and a half percent, two and a quarter percent in 2018, and a flat two percent in 2019. There was no increase to the city for healthcare in 2017, so we proposed in the four contracts for the unions as well as for the non-union employees, a 1% increase of the employee's share in 2018 and a 1% increase in 2019. That is dependent upon the city's insurance rates increasing by at least a percent or greater. The other major change was vacation. How it had been done historically was you would work the whole year and then be awarded your vacation January 1st for the previous year. And what we do with sick time is award it incrementally at each pay period. So we've agreed, or the unions have agreed, and we wanted to pass the same benefit on to the non-union employees to every, every two weeks, they will get a portion of what they would earn. It's no increase in the amount of vacation they earn, but instead of waiting, if you're here for six months, you would have one week to use if you were a person that got two weeks that year. And then the only other change, significant change, is the sergeants. Their contract is written that the first-year sergeant gets 6% higher than the top patrolman rate, and the sergeants with more than one-year seniority were getting 14%. And they negotiated, and we agreed, to raise that from 14% to 15%. So it's a 1% increase, but in exchange for that, that it won't take effect until the contracts are executed, and then it'll become effective on that date versus retroactive to January 1st. We did this all without fact finding or arbitration and saved the city as well as the unions money, time, and aggravation by doing that, and I'd appreciate council's support of it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Coin?
Mr. Simpson?
I'm going to have to abstain from this.
Which one?
Oh, I'm sorry, 7217.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause for ordinance 7217?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Abstain?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Abstain. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Whoa. Yes. Sorry about that.
Freaking me out.
Me too.
All right, thanks.
Lamb?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 68, one abstention.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Abstain?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Ordinance 72-17 passes 17, or 68, one abstention.
I'm sorry, I was writing it on the piece of paper of him abstaining and everybody.
Guys got me almost.
Now let's move on to ordinance 7317. Ordinance ratified in a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Medina and the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association for Patrol Officers.
Move to...
And authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement.
Move to approve?
Second?
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Okay, will the clerk please call the, is there any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Ordinance 75-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 76-17, ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2013 Freightliner model M2 Vac all cab and chassis from Best Equipment Company to be used by the street department.
Move to approve?
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Pecoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. Currently, the street department has two street sweepers in the fleet. One is a 1993 Ford Sun Vac, and the other is a 2012. This unit will replace the 1993 that served the city well. It's a VacAll, which basically translates to, it's a street sweeper, a vacuum for catch basins, and it also has leaf collection option, which we are hopeful that it'll help in the fall. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 76-17 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 77-17, ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2018 Freightliner, 114 SD conventional cab and chassis dump truck from Valley Freightliner for the water department.
Move to approve?
Second?
Discussion, Mr. Pecoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the water department. We're looking to replace the tandem Maxwell dump truck, which is a year 2000 vehicle. It's been in service for 17 years and has served the city well also, so this is the replacement for that unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.[1295.33]
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-seven dash seventeen passes, seven zero.
Ordinance seventy-eight seventeen, ordinance prohibiting cultivators, processors, and retail dispensaries licensed under Chapter thirty-seven ninety-six of the Revised Code within the City of Medina, Ohio.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Huber.
Thank you, Mr. President. With respect to the issue concerning marijuana cultivation, retail dispensaries, and processing, it is administratively the recommendation that we prohibit this activity at this time until the federal government acts with respect to marijuana possession and use. Currently, federal law classifies marijuana as a drug of abuse. It's illegal to possess marijuana under federal statutes, and the states have proceeded with authorizing activities that involve retail dispensaries and cultivation and processing without really addressing the fact that the federal law prohibits these activities. As an attorney representing the city, it seems incongruous to me, and also incongruous to the mayor, to be sworn to uphold the laws of the state of Ohio, and also sworn to uphold the laws of the United States, and simply ignore the fact that the federal law prohibits these activities and prohibits marijuana possession. Until the federal government acts, there is no exemption to possessing marijuana, and it would seem more appropriate for this to go forward where the federal government clarifies this issue, and we then go ahead to decide what we want to do locally with respect to processing, dispensing, and, and selling in a retail outlet. That hasn't taken place. It seems to put the cart in front of the horse to simply assume that you can engage in these activities without addressing, at the federal level, this issue. It puts an attorney in an odd position to represent a city and be sworn to uphold these laws, and then decide myself, or for the mayor, that I don't need to follow that law. And if I can rationalize not following that law on this issue, how do I not rationalize any other federal law that I don't particularly care for? And there lies the problem. And after much discussion with Mayor Handwell and, and within, discussion within my office, our recommendation to council is that we prohibit these activities until the federal government clarifies this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of ordinance seventy-eight?
Mr. President, hold on. Sorry. I thought you were gonna say something, but just for public's clarification, previously the city had a six-month moratorium on this issue, and I voted in favor of that. I felt that the, this gave the, the legal department a chance to catch up on what the state put in place. I understand where the legal department is coming from, but, and I was willing to extend that moratorium, six, twelve more months, until the federal government decides what they're gonna do, which, as we all know, takes quite a bit of time. And I know we're under a new administration, so I thought that extending a moratorium might be the, the proper step. To put an overall ban on this, I know it's a taboo subject here, but to put an overall ban on it, I'm not comfortable with, so I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, let me just add this. I, I, the, the argument that the law director just put forward and the discussion that we had in Finance Committee was crystal clear. And, you know, fundamentally explained how two opposing things are set up. One was, this is the federal law, and one was, this is what the state's doing, and those two things are in conflict with each other. And as they explain better than I will, you can't, you can't have it both ways, and if the federal law says no, we need to wait until the federal law decides yes or no, not maybe some states can have it, maybe some, some conditions can allow it, but when the federal law is settled, then cities or states can justifiably correspond with the federal law. But until that time, it is pretty clear that not, not just the, the mayor, and not just police officers, but city council members as well, are all sworn to uphold, uphold the law. And that argument, to me, is, is beyond being persuasive, and so I'll vote for the ban.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mayor Handwell?
I'm sorry, sir, in the first whereas, there's, there's just one.
Yeah, I already caught that.
Oh, okay. Disregard.
Mr. Coin?
Yeah, Mr. Simpson?
I also will be voting against this for, partially for the same reason that, that Mark is voting against it, but in saying that, I, I just wanna state that I have, there's no one I have more respect for than, than Mr. Huber and, and Mayor Handwell. I, I probably would not, and will not, vote for a recreational use of marijuana, but, but as medical marijuana, which from, I understand, from the reading that I've done, it's not going to be, being able to smoke the marijuana, it's gonna be an oil base, and it would benefit some people medically, so I would have been willing to go for extending the moratorium, but not, not the ban. Again, respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you, and I guess I would concur with Mr. Simpson. Having been through a few cases of cancer with close family members and others, the recreation use of marijuana, I don't think there's really any place for that, of course, but the medical marijuana does provide some unique challenges and unique opportunities for those who desperately need pain relief, and, and it is difficult to make a decision when you, when you see people in those situations, so I would agree with that. Is there any other comments?
Mr. President?
And Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you. I, I guess I just wanna make one clarification. I had some people make some comments to me over the last couple of weeks, wondering why I would not be in favor of the use of medical marijuana for medical purposes. And I just wanna clarify that this ordinance isn't saying the city is gonna ban the use of medical marijuana in the City of Medina. It's banning the cultivation and growing of it in the City of Medina. And I agree with Mr. Huber and some of the things that Mr. Lamb said, and for those reasons, that is why I'm voting for this.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
I too will be voting in favor of this for the very reasons that Mr. Hilberg brought up. We, last year at this time, I watched a very dear friend of mine pass away from cancer, and this would have helped him, medical marijuana would have helped him ease his pain. But again, it's against the federal law. We don't need to be spending any of our money. Should the federal government, highly unlikely, but should the federal government be coming after cities like ours passing these ordinances, we should not be spending our money, hard-earned money, fighting a lawsuit that's, it's clear right now that it's against federal law. And that, that's why I'll be voting for the ban.
Thank you. Any other comments? Would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson?
No.
Coin?
No.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-eight dash seventeen passes, four yeas, three nays.
Ordinance seventy-nine seventeen, ordinance amending Section thirty-one thirteen of the salaries and benefits code of the City of Medina, Ohio relative to vacations.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause, any further discussion on emergency clause and ordinance, I think the mayor discussed this early on. Would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance seventy-nine dash seventeen passes, seven zero.
Ordinance eighty-eight dash seventeen, ordinance amending Section thirty-one sixteen of the salaries and benefits code of the City of Medina, Ohio relative to group hospitalization.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Is there any further discussion on emergency clause and ordinance as in addition to the mayor's comments? Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of emergency clause.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-one dash seventeen, ordinance amending ordinance number one sixty-seven
sixteen passed December twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, amendments to the two thousand and seventeen budget.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Dern.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to appropriate a donation, which we need appropriation to spend, and then some wellness funds also.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-nine dash seventeen passes, seven zero.
Ordinance eighty-one seventeen, ordinance amending ordinance number one sixty-seven sixteen passed December twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, amendments to the two thousand and seventeen budget.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on emergency clause and ordinance, Mr. Dern.
Thank you, Mr. President. This expenditure arises out of a vehicle accident. We're asking for the emergency clause because the vendor has already done the work, and we did not plan for this expenditure because we weren't planning on having the accident.
Thank you. Any further discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Clerk please call the roll on the adoption of emergency clause.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-two dash seventeen passes, seven zero.
Ordinance eighty-three seventeen, ordinance of the council of the City of Medina, Ohio certifying that when a municipal obligation was incurred, sums were lawfully appropriated in the funds to satisfy the obligation, and sufficient sums currently exist to satisfy this obligation.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Dern.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to pay the insurance, we're already into the policy, so that's why we're needing the emergency clause.
Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Would the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.